And with that, let me proceed with some introductions. And let's start off with our brand new District 29 trio team. I'd like us to all give a nice, warm welcome to our brand new Club Growth Director, Distinguished Toastmaster, Ms. Paula Green.
Yay!
And I'd like everyone to give a nice, warm welcome to our Program Quality Director, Distinguished Toastmaster, Ms. Shalise Gilmore.
Yay!
And I'm Rick Taylor, and I'm honored to be your district director this year. So that's the trio. We also have a fourth member of the team when we refer to our team as the quad. And that would be our Public Relations Manager, Distinguished Toastmaster, Mr. Edmund Joe. Edmund, say hello.
Hello, everybody.
Excellent. Well, we are delighted to have you all here, and we will be sharing reports with you in just a moment, as I said. But first, I'd like to take a moment and share with you our new district theme. We actually have a district theme every program year. And for this year, that theme is, drumroll please, Raise the Bar! And Raise the Bar is a theme that I selected because Toastmasters empowers us to set a higher standard for ourselves and for others to follow. I think one of the most exciting things about Toastmasters, if not the most exciting thing about Toastmasters, is seeing the growth that can take place, not only within ourselves, but within others who we support. When I started Toastmasters back in March 2014, at the rest and hear the Toastmasters, I was simply trying to overcome my fear of public speaking. I wanted to feel more confident speaking in front of a group of people. I never would have imagined that Toastmasters would have taken me on the journey that it has and opened up so many windows to support others in their growth. And it's been an incredible journey. And here I am, serving in the senior leadership team as district director with truly some of the most exemplary people that I've ever had the pleasure of getting to meet. And all of us this year have an opportunity to raise the bar, not only for ourselves and what we're capable of in terms of our own development with public speaking and leadership, but more importantly, raising the bar and how we support others. And that's a theme that I'd like to continue to drive home for this new program year. This is really going to be a year for all of us to work together to empower others so that we can see those around us discovering skills that they didn't even know that they had, discovering a better, brighter version of themselves. And with that, it is time to call on the reports. And we're going to start first with our report from the Public Relations Manager, Mr. Edmund Joe. And Edmund, I'm going to stop sharing my screen in case you need to share yours. And you do have the ability to share your screen if you want to share slides.
Thank you, Rick. I'll be really short. I won't have any slides to share. But I did want to let everyone know that over the last few weeks, we have started to celebrate the successes of our club members within District 29 who have completed an educational award, such as a Level Four or DTM. And we publicized that because they themselves have raised the bar. And we are celebrating the fact that they are becoming a better, having those skills that Rick said that they didn't necessarily know, and they had just completed an educational award. In addition, we publicize those clubs that have special events. So I ask each and every one of you to be the eyes and ears of District 29. If you, if there is a person that you want to highlight who have completed an educational award, send them to me. I mean, let me know who it is. Send me a photo. We can put together a flyer really quickly and publicize it on Facebook and as well as any upcoming here, a helicopter over my head, any upcoming events that you have for your club. Now, the one other thing, too, that I ask each and every one of you to help me with is support those that have raised the bar. And not only just look at the Facebook posts, but also like it and comment to it and congratulate them. Because all of that, even though we are so far apart from a geographical perspective, from Faulkeer County to Ashburn, to Woodbridge and Eric, and all that, is that it becomes a closer knit group. In addition to that effort, many of you may have received an email from me for the club presidents and the club secretaries, just as a very gentle reminder to assign your proxies, and the deadline is coming up. So that is a very, very quick recap of what's been going on in the PRM world. And one other thing, too, we're, we have an effort to consolidate the video so it's easier to find. So I know that Rick said that we're, we are recording this session, and we're going to have it in a repository where it's much easier to find. And we're going to revive our District 29 YouTube channel. So stay tuned for that. Back to you, Rick.
Thank you so much, Edmund. Really appreciate that report. And I, I too am very much looking forward to having our videos front and center on our website that will be easy to find for everybody, because we have a lot of great videos. Thank you again. And now it's time to hear from our Club Growth Director, Distinguished Toastmaster, Ms. Paula Green. Take it away, Paula.
Thank you very much, Rick. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate you taking the time to do so. My report will also be brief. And the first thing I want to announce is that we are chartering our first new club of the new Toastmasters year. And that is with a company called Ensco, E-N-S-C-O. They have a Northern Virginia presence in Springfield, but they also have other locations around the country. So this is, this club is going to include multiple Ensco offices from around the U.S., and that's very exciting. I expect that they will be formally chartered definitely before the end of this month with the conference or the convention coming up that kind of slows down the corporate staff a little bit. So I don't expect anything to really happen next week. However, after convention, I expect that final stages to happen very quickly. So that's very exciting. And of course, as you know, we are in the Smedley period. But in addition to Smedley, we are seriously looking at other ways of recognizing clubs and for the work that they do. I know that sometimes it can be difficult if you don't have enough members or if your club has had some challenges because of COVID, as many clubs have had. So we are going to be looking at alternative ways of recognizing clubs, such as with the amount of education awards that they get, with their retention rate of members. But also, we're going to recognize them within different categories of club memberships. So stay tuned for more details with that. We've already started to assign club coaches, and we will continue to do that as the year progresses. And as always, we are always looking for new ways to raise the bar. So if you have any ideas or suggestions, please email, call, or text. I'm happy to listen. Thank you so very much, and back to you, Mr. District Director.
Thank you so much, Paula. It was an excellent report. And now we're going to have an opportunity to hear from our Program Quality Director, Distinguished Toastmaster, Ms. Shalise Gilmore. Take it away, Shalise.
Thank you so much, Mr. District Director. Good evening, everyone. I am so happy to see so many faces here tonight. I want to give a short and brief report from the Office of the Program Quality Director. I want to remind everyone that we are now moving into fall contest season. So please look out on our website under TLI Events and Contest. And there will be kits available as well as some training available if you are looking into how to plan for your contest and how to judge contests or be a chief judge for the contest. We would love to see you at those sessions, and I'm looking forward to having our online contest this fall. Also, we have, we're wrapping up our virtual TLI session with our last one this Saturday, treasurer is at 10:00 a.m. But I also want to remind you that we do have an in-person TLI on August the 27th, and that information is under our website. If you look at TLI, there's a registration link where you can register. And we would love to see you in person one more time before the end of our TLI season. Last but not least, I would like you to please save this date, mark it in your calendars. We are having an in-person mid-year gala this year. And I am so excited to be putting that together for the district. That is going to be held on November the 18th, and it's going to be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And it will be at the International Country Club at Fairfax, Virginia. Some of our seasoned Toastmasters remember before the pandemic, this was a happening place to be. And from one of our own members here tonight reminded me of the medallion stakes that we used to enjoy so much at the mid-year gala. So I am looking forward to seeing you there. We will be recognizing our members who have achieved educational awards and recognition through the middle of our Toastmaster year. And please mark your calendars. That is all that I have here for tonight. Back over to you, Mr. District Director.
What is the date again?
Oh, sorry, it's November the 18th.
November 18th, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you so much, Shalise. That was an outstanding report, and I am still looking forward to our mid-year gala in particular. It'll be great to be back at the International Country Club after a couple of years. At this time, I wanted to see if any of our members that are on our Zoom call have any questions or comments about anything that you've heard so far from the reports. This is a town hall, so you do have an opportunity to chime in. And I'd like to encourage you to use the hand raised feature in Zoom. If you have something to say, please do raise your hand, and I'm happy to call on you. And we'd love to hear if you have a question, a comment. I'm not seeing any questions or comments. It's an awfully quiet bunch tonight. Okay, well, we are going to proceed then. And I'm sharing my screen, and just give me one moment, everybody. Okay. So we're going to start talking about the annual business meeting, which is coming up next week. And some people might be wondering, what is the annual business meeting? And we shouldn't assume that everybody is familiar with TI's annual business meeting. But it is a yearly assembly of the voting members of Toastmasters International. And it is primarily held for the election of board members and also to conduct other business of the organization. You know, what typically will happen every year at the annual business meeting is the board will vote on a number of proposals that will amend TI's policy. And for this upcoming annual business meeting, there are 12 policy proposals. And this is really an opportunity for our clubs to, to actually, you know, use their voice, because all clubs are able to, all clubs in good standing, I should say, are able to vote by assigning a proxy. And as of tonight, we are looking at 83% of the clubs in our district who have assigned a proxy. And if you happen to be a club president or a club secretary who is part of a club that has not assigned the proxy yet, you have until tomorrow. Tomorrow at midnight is the deadline. And not only do you have an opportunity to share with us who you would like to be your representative in voting for your club, but you also have an opportunity to provide instructions to your proxy of how you would like to vote. And part of what we want to do tonight with our town hall is just provide some general information to the membership about the 12 policy proposals that are going to be voted on, and then also just allow an opportunity for our members to ask any questions that they might have. So I am not going to go through an exhaustive sort of dissection of each of the 12 policy proposals. But what I will be doing is just briefly going through each one so that you're informed about what the board will be voting on next week. So we'll just take each policy proposal one at a time, and then we'll have an opportunity for comments. So most of the proposals, most of the 12 proposals are very minor. And when I say very minor, let's look at Proposal A, consistency and clarity. This is really the Toastmasters International Board just making some very minor grammatical and wording changes to improve readability and clarity. And some of the examples of what we're talking about here would be that they're capitalizing the word corporation when it refers to Toastmasters International. And they're also capitalizing the word bylaws when it refers to the bylaws of Toastmasters International. One of the other aspects of this proposal is that the bylaws of Toastmasters International will be amended so that division directors will be more explicitly listed as elective officers. And the term "club president" will be used instead of president. So again, this is fairly straightforward. There's nothing earth shattering here with Proposal A. It's all about just providing a little bit of consistency and clarity to the language in some of the policy documents. So we're looking now at Proposal B. This is the restatement of the organization and club purposes. And this is, again, very minor changes that are being made to the bylaws of Toastmasters International and the club constitution. And it really just has to do with modernizing language in very, and again, in very minor ways. And if you're interested in seeing what these changes actually look like, what you can do is go to the Toastmasters International website and click on Events, and then from there, the Annual Business Meeting. And then you'll see links to the proposals. And you can actually go and take a look at what the bylaws will look like once these proposals have been adopted. And you can actually see the highlighted portions of the bylaws there. So there's no ambiguity. It's pretty straightforward. So Proposal C is an amendment that has to do with adding inclusive language for gender. And it's very straightforward here, and it's really incorporating the phrases "gender identity" and "gender expression", you know, as part of an effort to provide greater inclusivity. And again, if you want to see how those phrases are being used in TI's policy, you can do that by taking a look at the website. Proposal D just has to do with modernizing the language that refers to communication and technology. If you look at the way that the current policy is written, it does, it uses the phrase, like using the phone, and it uses a phone conferencing as phrases. And what they want to do here is not just solely rely on that, but rely on, you know, references to video conferencing and also use the phrase "in writing". You can see in that second paragraph that they want to substitute the phrase "in writing" for specific written communication methods as a way to safeguard against the need for further changes. And again, if you're curious about this, I encourage you to read what the actual changes will look like, and you can do that on the TI website. Proposal E is, really refers to clarification on voting rights for member clubs. And you can see, as it's written here, it really has to do with the clarification of adding the phrase "in good standing". And the assumption was always that, you know, the club, as written in the bylaws, was in good standing, that that was the clear assumption there. But they're being more explicit by just adding that phrase "in good standing". So again, it's pretty straightforward. Proposal F, again, this is not an earth shattering development or change for TI. This is called the announcement to members. And so typically, when there is a, like, an announcement that needs to be made regarding, let's say, a change in dues for Toastmasters International, you'll see that the traditional, the existing policy requires that there's an announcement that appears in one publication method. Now, in recent years, Toastmasters International has actually made all of these such announcements in two, in two places. So it's included these announcements in its Toastmaster magazine and also its website. And so what it is essentially doing here in Proposal F, it is formalizing the requirement going forward that any of these announcements will be made in both Toastmasters magazine and also on the TI website. So that's Proposal F. Proposal G has to do with clarity on references to geographic regions. And the whole purpose behind this proposal is to clarify that the geographic, the definition of geographic regions that are referenced throughout the bylaws are really, they really come from the Board of Directors and not by any other entity. And the reason why that's significant is not everybody can necessarily agree on the term geographic region. So TI just wants to be very clear that they're using its own definition. And then there's Proposal H, which has to do with the scheduling of our, of the Board of Directors meetings. And essentially, this formalizes a degree of flexibility that Toastmasters International is giving itself for its Board of Directors and when it can hold, when it can schedule its Board of Director meetings. And typically, these board meetings would happen right before the annual business meeting or right after the annual business meeting. And they have the word "immediately" in the current TI bylaws. And what they're proposing is to remove the word "immediately" to give TI a little bit more flexibility. So if they, if they needed a few extra days to schedule that Board of Directors meeting, they can do that. And so they're adding the word "first" to ensure that that first Board of Directors meeting, following the annual business meeting, which has the election of the new officers and directors, that's going to be when those new officers and directors are then put in place. And so again, very minor changes here, nothing particularly earth shattering from a policy standpoint. Proposal I has to deal with voting at the annual business meeting. And again, this is really an effort on TI's part to formalize a policy that essentially that has been in place the last couple of years. Because, you know, next week, next week is actually going to be the first in-person convention that TI has had since the pandemic. It's been, it's just been purely online the past couple of years. And so we've had online voting the past couple of years. And what this, this proposal does is it formalizes the process and the policy that gives board members to amend the bylaws by participating remotely as well. So again, it's just about greater flexibility there. So moving to Proposal J, this is the Club Leadership Committee Chair Amendment in the club constitution. Now, the current club constitution in Article Six, Section Five, it does specify that the immediate past club president serves as the club leadership committee chair. And of course, as, as many of us know, the club leadership committee is responsible for identifying, you know, officers who are going to be leading that club in the subsequent program year. And that committee is led by the immediate past president. But what do you do when the immediate past president isn't available? I mean, let's try to imagine a situation where the immediate past president has moved away or moved on from Toastmasters. They're not involved in the club. So there is an existing provision right now that states that a different member can serve as chair if it's in the best interest of the club. What this proposal does is it just proposes to amend the club constitution just to clarify that the immediate past club president would not serve as the club leadership committee chair if that officer role is vacant. There you go. And then there is Proposal K, Club Officer Requirements. This has to do with TI's interpretation of wanting to honor the core values of Toastmasters, integrity, respect, service, and excellence with respect to the fact that we have, we have a requirement to have at least three club officers, of course, the club president, a vice president, and then someone who is a club secretary or club secretary treasurer. Those individuals must be different people. And to avoid any financial conflict, part of this proposal also requires that going forward, that who, that the individual, that there must be different individuals serving in the role as club president and club treasurer. So you can't have that, the same person, serving as president and treasurer, because that presents a potential conflict of interest and a potential compromise of TI's core values. A proposal L deals with club representatives on the district council. Now, currently, the club president and the club VPE have the option of identifying a proxy to vote on their behalf at the district council meeting. And what TI is proposing here with Proposal L is to eliminate the need for proxies. And they are essentially saying that you're a, if you're a club president or if you're a club VPE, you must be at the district council meeting to cast your vote. And if the club president can't make it, then the VPE can cast two votes. And then vice versa. Again, if the VPE can't make it, the club president can cast two votes. But proxies will no longer be allowed under this proposal if it moves forward. And that is the final of the 12 proposals. And so I'm wondering, I can't actually see, I'm going to turn off my, my screen share to just get a better look at our participants here. Does anyone have any comments or questions about any of the proposals? Dana Richard, you have a comment?
Actually, I have three comments.
Okay, please.
On the proposals. First off, Proposal G. This makes sense administratively for the board to define geographic boundaries, but you can also interpret it as further eroding the role of the clubs in the governance of the organization by ceding more authority, if you will, to the board directly. Doesn't matter against the proposal, but if you attend the board meeting in the town hall at the convention, then I recommend you listen very carefully to the questions and comments that come out of that with regards to that proposal. The second one, Proposal K, fully agree with what they're trying to do. Uh, the second one, um, proposal K, fully agree with what they're trying to do. I disagree with the wording is actually going to do it. The idea is to keep the president and treasurer separate. It talks about secretary treasurer, but does not specify, it actually does not say what they're trying to do, which is that the president and treasurer must be two separate people. Again, probably not a reason to vote against it, but it's something to keep in mind going forward. Yeah, proposal L, personally, I am against because I think there are situations in which the president and VP might not be able to attend even a virtual or hybrid meeting, in which case you disenfranchise clubs. This is the proxies and the fact we can't use them in a virtual environment is of itself has been an issue for quite some time. This to me just further exacerbate that issue continues to make it worse. I might personally am against this proposal, removing any kind of flexibility to ensure that the clubs can have a vote at the, the business meeting. So those are my three comments. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Dana. I appreciate you sharing those comments. And I also appreciate the fact that you mentioned that for those of us who are either in person at the annual business meeting, or those of us who choose to participate online, we will have an opportunity to hear comments both for and against these proposals uh, when they are put forward next week. So please do take an opportunity to uh, log in remotely if you are not going to be at the annual business meeting in person to listen in and see what the comments are. And, uh, I, it, it promises to be a lively discussion for sure. Does anyone else have any comments that they'd like to share on any of these proposals? If you, if you do, could you please uh, raise your hand using the Zoom function? And if you can't use the Zoom function, you can always send me a message in private chat. Judy Maggio, you have your hand raised.
Yes, um, I have a question about, I think it's proposal J, talking about the immediate past president. So if the immediate past president is not available for whatever reason, that, that indicates to me what this thing is, this proposal is intending to do is we have to democratically vote for whoever is going to take leadership of the committee.
So what it, what it is, yeah. So what it is, it is essentially saying is, um, it's, it's, it's trying to just add a little bit more clarity around the existing policy. So again, the, the, the way that the policy currently reads in the bylaws, uh, if there's a situation where the club does not have a immediate past president that can lead, uh, that committee, uh, they can identify someone else to lead that committee. Um, and this just adds some, an additional point of clarity to say that if the immediate past president is vacant, uh, then they will have the opportunity to identify someone else to lead this committee. So yes, presumably some, the other individuals within the, that same committee would then put forward who could be the leader.
Yeah. So the question is, so we follow parliamentary rule that we vote for whoever is going to be the leader.
Right. So the, the, what, what needs to happen is the committee then needs to put forward its own proposal on who will be, uh, the leader of the committee and then to take that proposal to the club and get it voted and approved in a democratic process. And the club can move forward in that way.
Thank you.
Any, thank, thank you, Judy. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, one, one other, one other comment that I'll, I'll share with, with everyone is just a reminder really that it costs nothing to attend the annual business meeting and, and indeed the convention uh remotely. So if you're not traveling to, uh, Nashville, uh, with the trio next week, uh, you can attend online and it's free. You just need to log in and do it, but please be sure to register because you cannot attend if you don't register. So be sure to do that. And so in the interest of time and seeing no other questions or comments, we're going to go ahead and move forward to taking a look at the, the IO and ID candidates, uh, for this year. Uh, we're going to start with the IO, uh, candidates for the 2022, 2023 term. And we can see here that Morag Matheson, DTM is our candidate for international president-elect. Uh, Morak has been around many years. She is a very accomplished individual. When we spoke with her, she referenced, um, Charles Gates' famous quote that remember that Toastmasters is a, is a team sport. She's very, very big on Toastmasters being a team sport and the core values of Toastmasters. And she always has some great ideas. We enjoyed speaking with her. I do want to say that the trio did have an opportunity to speak with all of the candidates in a 30-minute format. So none of the candidates had more than 30 minutes with the trio. And we had an opportunity to ask questions and just to get to know them better. Uh, you can see Roddy Spear, distinguished Toastmaster, is our candidate for first Vice President. And she's also someone that's been, um, in Toastmasters leadership for many, many years. Um, one of the comments that Roddy made in our interview, uh, she spoke about wanting to make amendments to the Club Success Plan. She feel, feels that right now, the current Club Success Plan is, is too long and it's cumbersome for clubs. Um, Roddy has a fascinating background and a lot of interesting experience. She grew up in Africa uh, and has, um, just a lot of interesting perspectives. So moving to the, uh, other international officer candidates, we have Stefano McGee, another DTM. He's our, one of our two candidates for second Vice President. Uh, you can see here that he has a master's degree, uh, in military operational arts and sciences, a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering. He was a, a district director for District 31 in the, uh, program year 2012 and 2013. And, uh, finished the year as a select distinguished district director. Uh, Alita Rashat is a DTM, is also our other candidate for second Vice President. You can see here, here that, uh, she, her experience includes from an educational background, she graduated from the University of South Africa. Again, really interesting perspectives that she's bringing to, um, the board, um, with her candidacy. Uh, one of the things that I appreciated about my, about our interview with her was she was very empathetic to our comments as a trio about the headaches that have been caused by the ERP rollout. And I appreciated her, uh, candor, um, in that regard. She also emphasized the fact that, um, everything that we do in Toastmasters is really based on relationships. And one comment that I'll share about Stefano McGee is, um, he mentioned something very interesting about, um, wanting Toastmasters uh, to move forward, um, with a mobile-first platform that right now we don't really have a satisfactory mobile, um, operation really for Toastmasters and just to, to move in that direction. So let's forward here. Uh, we also have several international director candidates, uh, that we'll share with you. Uh, we spoke with Robert, uh, Cavalo, DTM. He's one of two candidates for the international director role for Region Two. We also spoke with DTM Jesse Oakley III, DTM. He's again, the other candidate for international director from Region, uh, Two. The Robert was an, it was an interesting interview. He, again, was quite candid with us, uh, and talked about the fact that, um, there are just a lot of challenges right now in Toastmasters. And he emphasized the importance of awareness and engagement and, uh, wanting to understand different perspectives and emphasize the fact that when you're on the board, you do have a collective voice. And one of the questions that, uh, I asked many of our candidates that we spoke with was how do you ensure that you can present your own unique voice on a board that encompasses many different perspectives? Jesse Oakley spoke about the need for training to reflect Toastmasters international audience, which I thought was very interesting. He had some personal things to share with us as well about his own journey and having to deal with, um, his wife had cancer when he became the district director. Uh, so we, we got a little bit of a window into who he was as a person and how he overcame tough times. We also spoke with Kimberly Myers, DTM. She is one of the two candidates for ID from Region Four. And then you can see Mary Swanson, DTM, is the other candidate for, uh, the ID from Region Four. And we enjoyed our conversations with both of these candidates. Kimberly spoke a lot about the need for, um, recognition as a link to retention, uh, which made a lot of sense. Uh, she spoke about, again, um, a lot about her experiences as a region advisor. That's part of what her background entails. She told, she spoke about the need to build community in Toastmasters and spoke about how that really is one of our big opportunities going forward. Mary Swanson, uh, again, as someone who's been in Toastmasters for many years and shared with us, uh, that, um, solving personality conflicts is a big part of leadership. Uh, and that, um, it really requires an in-depth understanding of different communication styles, different leadership styles. I think that's something that all of us can relate to whether we're a leader at the club level or we're, we have a district leadership role. Um, that we all have to deal with, um, leadership, different leadership styles, different communication styles. One of the things that Mary emphasizes her key to success was listen first. Uh, again, she had some very interesting comments to share with us. So for Region, the, the open ID position for Region Six, we actually had three candidates that are all vying for this role. And you can see they're all DTM's Dawn Frail, Jing Humphries and Janet Lee Taylor. And as you can see from the slide there, they all have um, impressive qualifications in terms of their education, um, in terms of their background with Toastmasters. One of the things that Dawn spoke to us about is to leverage the, uh, leverage what we've learned, um, in our journey in Toastmasters. We all have opportunities to pick up, uh, new, new things as we go along, whether we're serving as a club officer or even just a regular club member. But certainly when we enter into district leadership, it presents a lot of new opportunities for personal growth. Take what you are learning from your experience and apply that to get better. Uh, that was one of the key takeaways from her. Jing emphasized, uh, that the ERP rollout caused some growing pains, but also a learning opportunity going forward. Um, she spoke a lot about the importance of, um, the leadership aspect of Toastmasters brand and how that's something that TI really needs to be focused on going forward. Janet Lee Taylor, uh, uh, one of, one of the things that she spoke to us about is advocating for something she calls true conversations from TI. She spoke about the need for TI to start holding essentially these virtual fireside chats with, uh, with districts to allow us to have more of a window into TI's thinking. And it was interesting to hear her perspective on that front. So for the vacant ID position for Region Eight, we have two candidates. On, on Wash Benagi, um, and also Brenda Mayard. And we enjoyed speaking with both of them. Anne Wash's background is in neuroscience, which, uh, again, um, she's also a millennial. So she brings a really interesting perspective. One of the things that she spoke to us about is how she'd like to see, uh, pathways, uh, be a little bit, um, a, a little bit more effective, uh, to take opportunities to create more options for members that have completed a level so that they're not necessarily just repeating the same projects and, and level one, the next time they go through that. She spoke about the challenge of creating new clubs. She also spoke about the need to develop our leaders in a manner differently than that we're currently doing it. And specifically, she talked about, um, learning to unlearn and then relearn. I thought that really caught my ear when she mentioned that. And essentially it's about identifying what are the best, uh, what are the best practices for us as leaders? Um, we need to unlearn the practices that aren't helpful and then relearn the ones that are. Brenda, uh, is from the district that represents the Caribbean island of Saint Martin. And she had some very interesting things to say about her background and her success. Uh, she's had great success with her district hybrid, uh, technology team and equipping, um, Toastmasters and her district to be much more, um, effective with holding hybrid meetings. Uh, and she's actually going to be providing us with some information that we can then impart, um, to, with our own district to get us up and running for, uh, hybrid club meetings. Because one of the things that we would like to do for this program year is develop some best practices that we can offer you and some, some support so that, uh, those of you that are involved with clubs that are engaging in hybrid meetings, but might not have the right, might not have all the answers, you know, you can have some support. Um, her CGD team has 40 people that, that really struck a chord with me. They definitely take a different approach to, uh, to leadership there. It's, they're clearly, you know, her approach is very much focusing on getting as many people involved as possible uh, and really promoting leadership. And that was a very interesting thing that we learned from our session with her. And then for Region 10, again, we had three candidates for this. There are three candidates that are vying for this vacancy, Florian Bay, uh, DTM, uh, I'm not sure of the correct pronunciation, uh, Pitaro Kimko, uh, DTM, and then also Gene Gamester, DTM. They're all running for the open position, uh, for Region 10. Florian had some interesting comments about wanting to bring, uh, trios, um, into discussions with the TI board. Uh, he felt that, uh, the TI board was not necessarily leveraging the opportunity to have input from district trios. I thought that was an interesting comment. Uh, uh, Piarto Kimko spoke about the opportunities that Toastmasters International can really learn from the pandemic to become more effective as an organization. Uh, it was all about, uh, he emphasized needing to apply lessons learned and not just, um, continue to operate like it did, uh, prior to the pandemic. Uh, Gene Gamester, uh, is someone that we also enjoyed speaking with. She has an extensive background in Toastmasters. She also spoke to us about the need to listen first to each other to ensure that we are effective leaders. And I've known Jean for two years. It was interesting to see her again and get another opportunity to, to talk to her. And then we also have, we have two, uh, individuals that are running for the vacant position on, uh, the ID Region 12, uh, board. Uh, sorry, the ID Region 12 position, Benjamin James McCormick, uh, DTM and Dora Gu. And let me see. I'm, I appreciate everybody's patience with me as I gather all my notes. I did take extensive notes from all of these interviews, um, and I'm just sort of gathering all my notes into one place here. Benjamin, um, offered a, a different perspective because he is someone who is from, um, you can see his education, University of Queensland there. Um, so he brings a different perspective from, uh, I believe he's from Australia. And he spoke about, uh, again, one of the common themes here that were, that we're getting from a lot of these interviews, it's, it's, and again, we did, we did ask the, these candidates a lot of the same questions. So, uh, Benjamin McCormick also spoke about the importance of TI wanting to be more engaged with, uh, members, uh, coming out of the pandemic and making sure that they, TI is applying lessons learned. Uh, Dora Gu spoke about her experience in quarantine. Um, she spoke- She spoke about the the fact that everyone was losing confidence as a result of the the ERP rollout. She spoke about the need for us in Toastmasters to really understand what members want. She's also from China. She was one of two individuals that we spoke with from China. The other was Helen He. And our interview with Helen He was very memorable. She spoke with us in very emotional terms and very powerful terms about what she experienced in her district in Region Number 14. They were really at the heart of the pandemic when it happened in 2020. And I believe they lost, I'm looking for my notes right here, and I don't want to misquote her, but they they lost a tremendous amount of members where in China. And she was right there in the epicenter in Wuhan, China. And she spoke about what it took to to rebuild her district. And it really involved essentially refocusing Toastmasters on personal connections and personal relationships. And that particular interview that we had was one that was very moving for all three members of the trio. And so at this time, I'd like to ask if anyone has any specific comments, any questions for us about any of the candidates that we interviewed? Jorge Hidalgo has raised his hand. Jorge, what do you have to say, sir?
Thank you, Rick. I really feel encouraged by the comments of some of the candidates, especially recognizing that the ERP rollout had some problems. That Toastmaster International is facing challenges and also from the lessons learned from the pandemic. To give some background, I have been a member of Reston Huron Toastmasters since 2011. And until 2019, the club had more than 25 members. However, starting in 2020, we struggled to recruit new members. And finally, in 2022, we were not able to get enough members to be a distinguished club, even though we were able to do complete the other seven goals. So talking with other members of other clubs, we are not the only ones struggling to recruit new members. The question is, is Toastmasters International evaluating changes that reflect what seems to be the reality of smaller clubs for at least a few years? One example will be considering changes to the distinguished group program on the requirement of having 20 members or a net growth of five new members to be eligible to be a distinguished club. I see that many of the candidates show as an achievement the distinguished club level that they got. And now is very challenging because of we are not able to recruit new members or maintain the existing ones. Thank you, Rick.
Jorge, thank you so much for your comment. Several of the candidates that we spoke with did mention the fact that the the measurements for district performance need to be updated in light of the changes that are happening. And so as you saw, Jorge, none of the 12 policy proposals pertain to make a change along the lines of what you're suggesting. But I can certainly affirm based on the conversations that the trio had with the I O and ID candidates that it is something that is being thought about, that they are clearly seeing that changes need to happen. That we need to be potentially rethinking the district, the district performance measurements, as well as potentially even what we look at for the DCP. One of the things that was mentioned as part of that conversation was also seeing if there might be an opportunity to include a measuring stick for club retention, because as you all know, right now, we don't really award clubs. We don't recognize clubs for strong performance when it comes to club member retention. And that's something that I think is being thought about, but certainly by several people in Toastmasters. Does anyone else have? Oh, Dana, you you have your hand is raised as well. Go ahead.
Just real quickly, I'm not going to weigh in on candidates. Some of them are friends of mine. I'm biased. But anyway, I do have a question. These are all ILC non-DA candidates, correct? Are there no four candidates that's going around?
So there are, there are, there are some four candidates. So Bob Huey would would be an example of one of the four candidates. But for the interest of time, I just limited our presentation to just the the non-four candidates. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, Rick. I really want to thank the trio for providing, in my opinion, a very detailed summary or look at all of the candidates. And I am encouraged because I do see diversity in terms of gender, ethnicity, and also you talked about millennials. And I think that that's something that will be positive moving forward. So thank you very much for a good job.
Well, thank you so much, Marie. We especially appreciate your your comment there. So we do have about two minutes left in our town hall. Does anyone else have any comment that they'd like to share or a final question?
Bethany here. Just if you, just to repeat, it is free to register and watch the business meeting, the two-minute speeches and all that. The rest of the conference is $45 to watch online to see the learning sessions and the speech contests.
Thank you for the point of clarification, Bethany. Appreciate that. Any other comments, questions?
A quick question. So only the trio per district can vote in the international director?
Oh, no, no, not at all, Terry. So like I said, all clubs have an opportunity to have their voice heard by assigning a proxy. And actually, if you have a club member who wants to make a trip to Nashville, they can vote in person if they'd like to, or they can vote and be the club's representative from home and just vote online. So it's not just the trio members that can that can vote here. But we are, you know, proxies that you can opt to to assign us essentially to to cast your vote. And then you could also provide instructions to us about how you would like to cast your vote.
And Rick, just a point of clarification.
Sure.
Your proxies must be submitted by tomorrow at midnight. So even if even if you have a club member who is going to physically attend in Nashville or who plans to virtually attend the business meeting, that proxy must still be assigned to them by tomorrow at midnight. So that's an important thing to remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate you sharing that. All right. Well, it is now.
Clarify just a little more on the on the question. Every club has two votes. The president and the secretary are able to sign the proxies. The vote can be cast by the club itself. As normally the proxies have gone to the district trios because most clubs don't attend the international convention and the trios do. They do interview the candidates. They attend the the board briefing to get all that information. But the vital thing is every club should ensure that its two votes are cast by somebody. If it's not a club member, then it can be any other Toastmaster in good standing, or it can be given to the the district trio. But every club needs to make sure that those votes are cast the way they want them cast. You can direct how the vote is cast. You can tell your proxy how to vote, or you can leave it to their discretion. But make sure those votes get get do get cast.
Thank you so much, Dana. And and also to reiterate something that I mentioned at the start of tonight's meeting. At last count, we were at 83% assigned, which is which is a pretty good metric. And we're we're actually hoping that we can get that number even higher before midnight tomorrow night. So again, if you're a part of a club that has not assigned its proxy, please do not hesitate. Take care of that immediately because we do want your voice to be heard at the annual business meeting. And with that, it is two minutes past the hour. I am going to officially adjourn tonight's District 29 Town Hall. This meeting is adjourned. I'm going to stay on the Zoom for a few extra minutes in case anyone wants to chat or ask any additional questions. But thank you so much for your time. We greatly appreciate it. And we will be having additional town halls over the course of the program year.